This is a town hall meeting of the City Council to be held in City Council Chamber, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM Tuesday, February 19, 2013, for the purpose of a special work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Semus?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Deborah. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a briefing, and first, thank you for taking time out out of your busy schedules to come to this very special meeting. It's a comprehensive meeting, briefing on the tunnel project and the Martin Luther King Expressway project. And we're going to take you from a very high altitude all the way down to the grassroots in this briefing. So we'll start with a definition of the project boundaries and go right down to what parcels that are needed in order to complete this project. We'll be doing this as a team, and if you have a briefing book before you, that looks like this, and we have six major components that we'll cover, and you'll find those on Slide 3. We actually have 50 slides, so we're going to be here for a while. And please ask questions as we go along. We'll cover everything from the history of the project down to next steps. And so, in order to launch this, I'm going to ask Fred Bruso to come up and introduce our team members.
Thank you, John. Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Cherry, ladies and gentlemen. As John indicated, we have a comprehensive team. It's one that sort of goes across all facets of the City Hall. Myself with planning. We have Earl Cheatham, city surveyor, Chaney Culpepper, city real estate assessor, Toy Wilson with economic development, James Wright with our city engineer, and last but not least for the people inside our office, we've got a young lady that y'all have not met yet, Miss Susan Wilson. Susan came to us about two and a half years ago. She is the manager of transportation and maritime planning. She has her undergraduate degree from the University of South Carolina and her bachelor and her master's degree from the, let's see, University of North Carolina at Albany. Susan is also an AICP certified planner that has added a lot in the time she's been here on the implementation of our master transportation plan. We also have a number of people outside of City Hall that have partnered with us and provided information, graphics. Ms. Leila Rice, Frank Fabian, Greg Woodsmall, and Wade Watson. They are all with various components of ERC, VDOT, that have worked with us to help provide this presentation for you tonight. As Mr. Rowe indicated, we have six major topics that we want to be speaking on tonight.
And we really want you to ask questions as we go along because, well, we don't want you to lose the question as you go from one slide to the other. Again, we want this to be as comprehensive as possible so that you have a good knowledge. And you'll see some things for the first time. For example, you'll see the profile of the bridge that's going to fly over High Street from north to south. And so, as you look at these various aerial photographs and cutaways, if you need to pause and get oriented, just let us know, and we'll point out the various landmarks to get you oriented on the map. As we take this trip, visualize coming through the Midtown Tunnel as it exists today and traveling south on Martin Luther King Expressway, and that's kind of the journey that we'll take as we go through this briefing. Okay? So with that, we'll start with the history.
We don't want to spend a lot of time on the history tonight, but we thought it was important to let you know that the Martin Luther King, the downtown tunnel and midtown tunnel projects altogether have been around in various stages since 1990. The project was first proposed at that time. However, it was halted for funding purposes in 2000. It was then sort of resurrected in 2006 and has moved forward with various milestones that we've read about in the paper or seen on the news until today, especially with the groundbreaking in January. I think it's important to note, too, that the council has had two briefings, however, they've been sometime in the past. As you can see, July '08 and March of 2009. In the back part of your booklet, you will find three resolutions that were issued by council or adopted by council, and one in 1990, one in 1998, and then the other one in 2008. We provided those to you for just some background history so you can see that this has been a project that has been moving along. As you look tonight at the various components that we are providing to you, remember $2.1 Think of the largest project to date in the city of Portsmouth, and that's Meris. They were about a fourth of that dollar amount for them to build that project. Not only is this the largest project in Portsmouth, it is one of the largest projects on the East Coast, and consequently, one of the largest in the United States being undertaken at this time. As you know, it's a public-private partnership between VDOT and the partners that they've selected. And what we would like to do tonight is to provide for you, as John has indicated, almost like a real big scale, and then bring it down to, in some cases, talking about individual parcels. We have a number of activities, and some of them are related and grouped together. And he said there were, there are going to be six major topics, and that's true. But those six major topics have a number of subtitles or subheadings for them that will take us through the boundaries, timelines, HRT improvements, wide variety of parts of this project that we think are important and that we need to have everyone familiar With that, I'm going to move on to the general information. James Wright, city engineer, will be handling the first part of this, and as we move through, each time we change up on you, we'll let you know who's coming to bat next. Are there any questions so far? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, member of the City Council. I'm going to go over the overall project boundaries first. Here's an overall map of the MLK project. If you look at the blue area right there, that is the project boundary. Okay, we've got the porno working. So the area in the blue is MLK extension. This is Port Norfolk. This area in here is Shea Terrace. As you move down, you see Truxton area down in there, Douglas Park area, the Old Norcom High School area, just to get you oriented to the map. The yellow areas are the incident response areas for ERC once the tunnel project is complete. These areas are bid, if we go to the next map, you can see a little bit better. The incident response area for this project is to the end of the Berkeley Bridge, and on the Portsmouth side, it is to the end of the West Norfolk Bridge. This is a snapshot of the existing Midtown Tunnel. See the tunnel entrance there? This is VPA property where they'll be doing some laydown and some other activities, maintenance yard, things as such. The new tunnel will be going to the west of the existing tunnel in this proximate area. Some work associated with this is they will have to relocate the raw Norfolk water main to get that out of the way of the tunnel. Some other activities associated with the Midtown Tunnel are the tunnel approaches and some work on Harper Avenue where they'll be replacing a water line down to Woodrow This is the existing MLK Expressway. If you're coming down on the expressway now, you can actually get off, basically, the Loop at London and you can get off at High Street and come into the middle of town. Once the project happens and is complete, you will no longer be able to do that. The project starts approximately just north of the existing London Bridge. As you're, as you're moving south, you have work on the ramps at London Boulevard. Coming through, by the time you get to High Street, you're totally elevated. So you'll have elevated bridge structure over High Street. You're going to move down. By the time you get to Turnpike Road, there's going to be no treatment of the, of the bridge structure. So from High Street, actually, from Queen Street down to Turnpike Road, you're going to have MSC walls, basically, which are the concrete panels. So it'll hide a portion of the bridge, but by the time you get to Turnpike Road, it'll be all bridge. You'll go over Turnpike Road, cut across the CSX yard. In here, on Columbus, on Columbus Avenue, Dale Homes, Swanson Homes area, there'll be some work in shutting down the Des Moines Avenue and South Street ramps. And actually, coming back down here, down here, this is Douglas Park, the athletic field. This is where they will start widening I-264. By the time you get to North Truxton, part of Trexler Avenue will be relocated, and it'll actually start the expressway extension coming back towards Midtown.
I have a question.
Sure.
Every place where it's going to be elevated, you know, coming across High Street, how many areas will, will a structure be in that area where it's going to be elevated?
I don't understand the question. Could you?
Okay. You're going to have to elevate some areas, your High Street out the MLK Expressway?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Exactly where would they be is my question.
It actually starts, this is Calvary Baptist Church right there, and it starts right under the existing bridge. They start elevating the expressway and it flat over High Street. And then, as James said, that, that will be a bridge. This will be built up with a concrete wall, and then when it gets down here, it becomes all bridge again. When we say bridge, you can, you know, look under the interstate.
So that will cut off King Street and County Street?
Yes.
It will.
And we'll go over that later in the, the presentation, but you're absolutely right. We'll have some streets that are cut off, and we'll have some that are, we'll, we'll actually have some ramps that are permanently closed.
I have a question. I'm just thinking about the impact of the neighborhoods that will be bordering where these overpasses are coming, calling expressways, which are the way. It's going to definitely impact through many of the neighborhoods, which could really create a redistribution of how some neighborhoods are laid out. And part of them are historical. When you look at the nature of the Douglas Park community and some of the others that are coming over.
Well, in the Douglas Park area, all the work is on VDOT right of way, but by the time they get to North Truxton, Trexler Avenue piece, that's being relocated, and several properties have been acquired to actually make that relocation.
I think it would be helpful to the populace to know exactly where those impacted areas are going to be, because it will have a direct effect on the lives of the individuals who are living anywhere around near that area.
Yes, ma'am. And they, we'll be discussing property acquisition a little bit later in the presentation.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, now I'm going to talk a little bit about the overall project timeline and project timeline for some of the key segments. Okay, as you can see here, the project is basically split into three components, the new tunnel construction, the MLK extension construction, and the tunnel rehabilitation. For the new Midtown Tunnel, work is, work has already begun. Some of the work associated with this part of the project involves the relocation of private utilities, fabrication of the new tube, and relocation of the raw Norfolk water main. As you can see, some of the project dates here, the Portsmouth approach is scheduled to start February 2013 and be completed by June 2015. Dredging is to be completed in 2014 with completion actually of the tunnel in 2016. Okay, the MLK extension is divided into technically five project phases. The phases are based on utility relocation and their associated corridors, and I'll get into some of the key segments. Okay, property acquisition and relocation of private utilities began in the fall/winter of 2012. Property acquisition needs to be completed in advance of construction, and certain private utility relocations are taking place as we speak. If you've traveled that corridor, you may have seen some work in and around the tunnel, and as you move forward to the middle of the city, some relocations have already started to take place. After they acquire property, it typically takes 30 to 90 days to demo the property based on the results of the environmental assessment. All private utility relocations should be completed by the end of 2013. Part of this project includes the relocation of the 20-inch water line, the transmission main that starts about the entrance to the PRHA compound, goes down Old Randolph Street and approximately behind Dale Homes, comes through the city compound, and ties in at the pump station at Frederick Boulevard. There's, I'm going to group these together because they're all similar work. Columbus Avenue with the PRHA property and work at Columbus Avenue over by Muro Chemicals, which is right off of the South Street ramp. If you go down South Street and you go down the dead end right there, next to Swanson Homes, those properties back up in there. This is where you'll see a connection of the extension with I-264. You see the bridge structure. There's going to be some property acquisition and demolition associated with this. There'll be stormwater ponds and the relocation of private utilities. As I discussed a little bit earlier, the closure of the ramp at I-264 Frederick Boulevard is associated with the relocation of Trexler Avenue. This is where the extension is actually coming back, coming across I-264. It's a relocation of some utilities. You're going to shift that city road to make way for the ramp for the MLK extension. So there's property acquisition and demolition involved. The pedestrian bridge replacement, December 2013 to August 2004, is part of the technical requirements in the, in the package that the group has, and that will involve some nighttime closures of I-264 as they replace that bridge. On Harper Avenue, they're replacing a water line basically from, basically from the tunnel tube down to Woodrow Street for fire suppression purposes. The existing water line does not carry enough capacity for them to meet their fire demands, so they're actually replacing the existing water line with a larger sized water line. The closure of, the closure of Harbor Drive from Queen to London Street and the, and the London Boulevard ramps is scheduled to start March 2014. The closure of Harbor Drive from Queen Street to Turnpike Road is scheduled to start June 2014. And in November 2014, they're planning on having all of that work to done and opening those ramps back up. Basically, what's happening in that area, they're going to have some stormwater ponds, and that's where you start to see, see the bridge build up to get ready to cross over High Street. Lastly, on the slide, is the closure of the ramps, the I-264 ramps at Des Moines Avenue and South Street. And I think the, that date is November 2013.
And that's a permanent closure?
It's a permanent closure, yes, ma'am.
At Des Moines?
Yes, ma'am, at Des Moines and South Street.
Pardon me?
Yes, ma'am.
I think one of the things that would be helpful is once you have some type of a pictorial graphing of how that area is going to spread out, when you think in terms of the closure on certain streets for the bridge, the highway, wherever, will be a cause. We need to make sure that is in a way where the average LA person can understand what we are talking about pictorially of how that area is going to be. The words are fine, but when you begin the implementation plan, how it's going to fall in place is what the residents are going to need, because it's going to impact the total visual view of what the neighborhood was and what it will be with the overpasses coming over. And it's going to impact some of those neighborhoods.
Yes, ma'am.
James, do you have any actual elevations you can show us tonight?
Yes.
Is it easy to get to that picture now, or should we wait? All right, we'll wait. Go ahead.
We'll wait till you get there. I just want to make sure we see them. Of course.
Okay, the, this should read "existing tunnels rehab." You're going to rehab the existing downtown tunnel tubes and the existing Midtown tunnel tubes. This gives you basically the work schedule. As you can see, the eastbound downtown tunnel tube will take longer to complete than the westbound tunnel tube because of the ceiling tiles that they have to take down. The existing tunnel rehab will not occur until the new tunnel tube is in place and functioning. You'll see that they have planned full weekend closures. That's a complete closure of, of the tube. What that timeframe will be, it will be Friday starting at 8:00 PM and ending Monday at 5:00 AM. The single tube closures will, single lane closures will happen Sunday starting at 8:00 and ending on Thursday at 5:00 AM.
What, does that construction, the start of that rehab, is that the trigger for tolls, Mr. Wright, or is there some other event?
No, sir. I think that's, that's a planned event. I'm not sure what the trigger for tolls is, but this is scheduled work. I don't, I don't think it has any connection with the tolls.
I know, I know in part of the, some of the presentations I've seen that once construction of some sort occurs, whether it's just simple, something as simple as putting a sign up and repeating what I've heard in presentations and also concerns from citizens, that there's a, there's a trigger that says, okay, we're starting to improve the tunnel, so consequently, the tolls can begin. Is that?
Understood. They've already got the gantries in place and have already begun to do some things in the tunnels. Not necessarily, I don't think it's the major rehab projects that they have.
Well, obviously, the gantries have to be there, but I'm told after they are erected that whatever that construction manifests itself, you know, let the tolls begin. And I know they've set a date, but it sounds like it coincides with some type of construction. It's state driven, not federal driven.
I'm not sure this mic is on. Yeah, it's on. And if I remember correctly, it's February 1, 2014? Yes. So it doesn't have anything to do with a particular phase of construction. It's just a date on the calendar that the tolls come into play. And remember, this is a six-year project. When you looked at the overall slide that showed all three components, it goes from 2012 to 2018, with the last part being the rehab of the existing Midtown Tunnel.
So that date is February?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
Irregardless of the milestone or whether it's in the project, February 1, you're going to start paying tolls. So if the tunnel isn't actually built, when is the completion of the Midtown Tunnel?
Get back a slide.
What was that slide?
September 19th.
Ninety.
Oh, one more.
There it is, down there.
April of 2000.
2000.
April 19th.
April 2018? Which one are you looking for? Which one are you looking for?
The construction.
I'm looking at the area.
So the tunnel will be done in 19?
There you go. It's, the new Midtown Tunnel timeline is, is before you, it starts in November 2012, which has already started. Dredging this summer, the tunnel replacement in 2014, 2015, with this timeline calling for the construction to be completed in the fall of 2016.
So two years before, two and a half years before the tunnel actually opened, tolls will commence?
That's correct.
Yep, that's right.
And we're looking at 42 weekends out of 104 closures on the downtown tunnel, and I mean, that's a whole lot of closures.
Well, it is. And what they're doing is rehabbing the tunnels, and you can see the westbound tunnels or lane are the ones from Norfolk side to our side, of course. And then, the eastbound is self-explanatory, and then they, once they do the downtown tunnel, they come back and do the Midtown Tunnel. And by the time that they start in December 2016, remember what that other slide said, the new tunnel is completed in September of 2016. Makes sense?
Yeah, and then sixty days later, they start working on the original Midtown Tunnel.
Exactly.
For 37 out of the next 60 weekends.
Okay, rehabilitation of the tunnels includes new ventilation systems, electrical improvements, fire safety systems, communications upgrades, structural repairs, and lighting. As far as notice of the lane closures, lane closures will be reported via the VDOT weekly lane closure forecast. There will also be advanced advertisement on the radio, TV, online, and on billboards, and full detours will be enacted where appropriate. Going to touch on some other construction-related info. As far as the work zone, access will be controlled by SKW and ERC. In critical areas, there will be construction fencing. You are not permitted within the work zone unless you have attended a safety class at ERC/SKW headquarters. You're identified by a sticker that you wear on your hard hat. If you aren't there for any emergency reason, say, police, fire, EMS, or say, public utilities for, if they have a water main leak as such, you will not be allowed on the site. Vehicles for police and fire will be able to use the service roads that are within the project area, and full detours will be enacted. As far as traffic impacts, the project has specific routing of construction traffic that they're going, talking with the city about. We are actually looking at adjusting our existing truck routes to alleviate some of the traffic within those corridors to make it clear to truckers where they should and shouldn't be. And we're going to have to pay specific attention to take care, to coordinate all street closures and detours with other city events, other city projects, and other activities within the city. Right about the same time that this project is starting, it's anticipated that the Turnpike Road project will start that, that fall, so later this fall, in the October, November time. timeframe, the Turnpike Road project will open again. After the project, some of the existing traffic impacts, as we've talked about before, King Street and County Street will no longer be able to go through, they'll be cut off by the MLK extension. On each side of the extension, they'll actually be connected by service roads, they won't actually dead-end at, at, at the extension, but they'll in turn be connected. If you're traveling from Churchland to Midtown, you will no longer be able to get off at High Street, you'll have to either get off at London Boulevard or Frederick Boulevard to conduct any business within Midtown. If you want to go to downtown, you can either take London Boulevard or you can take the MLK extension. If you're going from the, to Midtown Tunnel, from I-264, you'll be able to take that extension that I mentioned was gonna start around the Douglas, Douglas Park area, get on, get on that off of 264, swing around, and come back towards Midtown. Just a couple of access points to the new facility from Churchland, you'll be able to access it via the West Norfolk Bridge, you'll be able to access a new facility via the ramps at London Boulevard, you'll be able to get on and off at High Street, but like I said, you won't be able to, you'll be able to get off, on and off the expressway at High Street, but you won't be able to, like I said, come from Churchland and get off at High Street as you can do today. The closures?
James, right there, stop right there a minute, looking at your timeline, if I'm coming from Churchland around the Penner Point Connector, at what time are we gonna shut off the, I guess it's Harbor Drive, at, right at the cross-section of where London Boulevard is? We're gonna do that here in the middle of 14? Is that what you're showing on page 17?
March 2014.
March of 14?
Yes sir.
Will be able to come as far as the exit to get on London Boulevard? We won't be able to go under London Boulevard starting March? Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's start to ramp up there, so you, you'll have to get off there because it's a construction, once it's done now, you'll be able to get on the extension.
Yeah, but traffic coming from Churchland, West Norfolk Bridge, at what time and where do they, where's the impact and where do they get off? Once they cross the Penner Point Connector?
You'll have to get off.
You come down like you're going to Calvary, your church, then you take the ramps.
Yes sir, and you were correct. Because once, once the spring of 2014, they start elevating the MLK, once you come under the existing bridge, and so from that point on, it'll be a construction site.
So March of 14 is when we're gonna shut down from London Boulevard going in?
Yes sir, and you'll start seeing the bridge come across High Street and possibly as early as May, made the work.
Okay, and that?
The businesses right there, they, we talked to them, that they know what's coming and how it's gonna affect them and all that. It's several businesses right there in that corridor, on both sides of High Street.
Janey's gonna go over what properties have to be required, acquired, and some of those businesses may find that they are gonna have to move.
Is our inspectors and stuff out there with this job, our engineers?
No, we are overlooking the plans to make sure they conform with our standards and specifications. There will be VDOT inspectors on site, and there will actually be third-party inspectors, I think JMT is engineering firm, that'll be actually inspecting the project and making sure that everything conforms to city standards.
They'll still have to, we'll still be, will we be the lead or will VDOT, or what inspectors will be the lead?
It'll be, it'll be their folks.
VDOT? Or the third?
The, the third party. I thought it'd be worthwhile to mention the commute to Norfolk. Work in Norfolk's limited to the tunnel approaches, does not involve any road widening on Hampton Boulevard, no roadway widening down near the Red Gate signal, which is a controlling factor, so your travel to Norfolk, you'll gain additional capacity in the tube. Once Norfolk re-times the signal, you may get some additional level of service, but I can't speak as to whether there'll be a, a great improvement for the trip through the Midtown Tunnel going to Norfolk for work.
Ma'am, one other question. What safeguards will we have in place? I'm thinking about the disruption within neighborhoods with overpasses, you have to run them some way, those highways. Will there be some type of in-services with the civic leagues or over those communities where we are going to have a tremendous impact in the change in patterns? I'm looking at the closing off of the Des Moines Avenue ramp, there's a lot of cutting through there, particularly when you think about going to the freeways in downtown. Somewhere, we, we're gonna really have to do a lot of workshops with the individuals that are definitely going to be impacted with the way these routes are going to change with the neighborhoods, and maybe some communities may have to be changed with the housing with some of the streets being blocked.
I would think they're gonna fence all that off. If you come from London Boulevard, with that neighborhood on both sides, you got Sheeters and that side, then you got that little partial neighborhood between our utility facility out to Harbor, I would think all of that's gonna be.
The work zone will be cordoned off by construction fence, and then there'll be specific detours in place to get, citizens to navigate around the work zone.
Okay. Yes, I think of a pictorial.
Cause your impacts are there, and then you have another impact of the neighborhood along King Street and County Street, and then once you jump across the bridge or 264, then you're over into the Truxton area, and I believe there's what, two or three homes there that's gonna be impacted?
I think it's three or four.
Or five, okay.
Something, something to that number, yes.
But all of that stuff is gonna be gated off, so that won't, it's a matter of interfacing with the civic leagues and letting us and them know, but all of that should be secured so no one's.
I think the most important thing, a lot of people, you can talk a program through, but unless they see a graphing or map, which gives you a picture of the changes that are going to take place, they will not realize the impact of this change taking place until it's actually happening, and the streets and things are gonna have to be blocked off because there are a lot of areas that's going to be impacted, because this is a major investment, and it will change some things.
Yes ma'am.
After they get done with the tunnels and stuff, why aren't we taking the lead far as the work from the MLK all the way to 264? Cause that's really the city's property. I, I understand the bridge tunnel cause you're connecting the two, I don't, I don't, I don't understa, I mean.
Won't be long.
I worked in different states, right? And the city that's hosting the work controls the work, and I don't, I'm not, I'm not following why we're not gonna control the project.
Well, first, we don't, we don't maintain 164, for example, that, that is a state road. And so the approach coming from the west to this project is already a, a state highway. This will be, because this is a public-private partnership between the state and the developer, there's not a role for us in this except to make sure that such things as stormwater, relocation of our utilities meet the appropriate laws that we are charged with administering. As far as the project, it's out of bounds for us, we don't have any, any say. We didn't have any say in the deal, we don't have any say in the design, and really no say in the construction.
Didn't, didn't we have some input, though, in the beautification?
We do, we're gonna cover that. We're gonna cover that.
Okay, I'm looking at capital investment. The overall project construction cost, 1.45 billion, that includes the MLK extension, Portsmouth Approach, utility relocation, mobilization, and some other indirect costs. Just to put in perspective as far as city infrastructure, there's over 4,000 linear feet of new, new water line, include, that number includes just over 1,000 feet of the 20-inch transmission main, just under 2,500 linear feet of sewer mains, and just over 7,000 linear feet of stormwater pipes. The maintenance piece is 2.2 billion over the life of the project, that's in $2,011 over the 58-year project lifetime. Some of the major projects included in this number, bridge rehab and/or replacement, roadway paving, major facility renovations, replacement of gar rail, signage, and ITS equipment. And they've already spent $4 million to renovate the Penner Point Facility, and that serves as ERC headquarters and houses VDOT project management staff. With that?
But all of that, that you're talking about, James, is all pertaining to them and their project, that's nothing that's benefiting the city with all of this linear footage of pipe and drainage and all that, correct?
Yes and no, I mean, the, the relocation of the utilities, because they're some, some older facilities, specifically the transmission main, it's an old lead joint pipe that I think dates back to pre-1930s.
They're gonna tie into.
No, they're gonna replace over 1,000 linear feet, that main serves, gives, provides waterfall of downtown.
Is it also some stuff on Turnpike they're doing?
Yes, as they're coming through, actually, well, in the corridor between High Street and Turnpike is where you get a lot of the, some of the older infrastructure, the water and sewer line relocations, and so we're getting some upgrades in that area as well, as far as utilities specifically. The biggest impact and improvement as far as the city goes is in the replacement of that aged utility infrastructure, so it's mainly on the water sewer side.
So we figured out or been able to get our arms around the damage, the delay and disruption that's gonna cause the city, and what kind of impact that's gonna be while they're doing it?
As far as utility outages?
Sure.
It'll be no more than any construction project that we would undertake, there are specific requirements that are gonna be put on as far as time of work, specific things are gonna have to be done at night when, when the usage is down, switching over services, typically don't take very long, but if we anticipate problems, they'll be done when usage is low, just to minimize interruption to the public as they're making those utility relocations and connections.
I have a concern, at this stage, if we see anything from the city side that's out of order or something that maybe need to be rerouted, do we have any recourse to change anything?
We are still currently working with project staff to ensure that our requirements are met as far as the plans go in aspect of drainage, water, and sewer and some other things, so we're still working with project staff. And with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to Fred if there are no additional questions.
I won't belabor it now, but I still think we need to, if we don't know what kind of delay and disruption and cost that we, the city, are gonna incur because of, I got your time tied up putting out fires because they've done something that's damaged something, that kind of stuff is not our cost, and that's not your job or anybody else's job to be able, we gotta respond to make sure we get citizens and people in a, in a, in a comfort zone or back up and running, but we've gotta be able to capture that cost as well. And I haven't heard that, don't get into it now, but we can talk to it later, but it's gonna happen.
And, and to the mayor's point, who is our contact? Is it, is it the, is the private partner gonna be involved in communication? Are we communicating with a private partner, or is our communication strictly with the Commonwealth?
We've been communicating with VDOT, ERC, and SKW throughout the process.
That goes to my point again, if we see something that needs to be fixed, is it gonna be fixed, or is, we just have to accept it the way it's gonna be?
When it comes down to the utility infrastructure, it's a public asset, it's a safety issue, we don't take that lightly, and we don't sign off on plans unless we're sure that they're right.
There's another point, you have neighborhood civic leagues that are all around in those areas. We need to make sure that they understand what's going to take place because I don't care how well we plan, there's going to be some services and some alternate routes that people are going to have to take as a result of the construction that is going on, but if you let them know ahead of time and talk with them, then they buy into what it is that you are doing. But many of them, unless we go to them and let them know, they're gonna feel as if we're just turning up an area, but we need to make sure those communities that are impacted are, they understand what's going on.
Yeah, to Councilman Randall's point there, perhaps as the project gets underway, twofold, we, we could include an update on our access channel on, you know, the, the upcoming impacts in your particular community, also put it on the city's website and perhaps even include an update in the utility bill that everyone gets.
These are all good points, if you would want to flip to slide 51, you'll see that next step includes an awful lot of communication, in fact, ERC, the developer has a public information officer, and VDOT has a project manager here, so we foresee a lot of communication needing to be done, exactly what you all are, are saying. One of the reasons why we're doing this briefing in here is to allow the public a better venue to see this presentation, but we plan to show this presentation several different times, but communication is critical.
Yes.
One of the things I wanted to, if you remember Fred's slide number two, it had a number of, no, just go, no, go to the one before, that one. It had a, a number of $2.1 billion, but the actual construction cost, bricks and mortar, is 1.5 billion rounded. And again, to give you a comparison, MERS, the construction of the MERS facility was a half a billion dollars, so the bricks and mortar part of this is three times larger than MERS. So it is, in fact, the largest construction part, project in the history of Hampton Roads, up until this project, MERS was the largest construction project ever in Hampton Roads. Where the additional money comes from is the developer's estimate of the maintenance that the developer will have to do on the system between now and 58 years from now, and that's how you get a number like 2.2 billion over the life of the project. That would be like going up to a car on the, on a new car lot, and you see two prices, the price of the car, and then let's assume that you keep the car for 10 years, you'd have the 10-year lifecycle cost of the car. To maybe come up with a better comparison, it's easy to estimate that we'll spend nearly a billion dollars in the city of Portsmouth on maintaining all of our streets and highways and bridges. Let me just think about what lies ahead with the Churchland Bridge, that's a $29 million That's a $29 million project, and that's only to replace two lanes. Certainly, between now and 58 years from now, we'll have to replace the other two lanes. And so as you look at this number, that is the major maintenance that they've got to do on roadways, tunnels, signals, the stuff that they have to do. Again, back of the envelope, we'll spend probably about a billion over the next 58 years on our highway system in Portsmouth. Does that make sense? But the real bricks and mortar number is 1.45 billion. And so Fred's gonna tell you how they're gonna fund this, this project.
Thank you, John. As you can see, basically, there are four ways the funding will occur for this project. Private equity, that was what was put up by the developers. Commonwealth contributions. I guess I should say Commonwealth of Virginia contributions, federal dollars, and then the debt. What they've taken out is bonds. We have a slide that looks at, and says 2.8. And we rounded up to 2.1 billion dollars. If you look at the first slide here in equity commitments, this is the cash. This is what the developers had put up, was $2.72 million. They have put that up as their part of this pie, I guess you would say. $421.1 million was put up by the Commonwealth of Virginia. Initially, if you remember, that was $362 million. However, that figure was increased to allow for the additional time from when the tolls were initially planned to begin, which was past July to February of 2014. That was the reason for that increase. We've got $2.51 million as shown in project revenue during construction. That's really not included in that $2.1 million. If you add it up, you'll see that that is not really included in there. That's just revenue coming in from the tolls during that time. You have a $463 million in the Federal Highway Administration Kiffa loan. That includes the interest that is on that loan. So you've got those figures. Finally, there is the debt or the private debt that's out there in the bonds, and that's $675 million in private activity bonds. As we move along and as the years go through, the millions that you saw for the general maintenance will be coming out of revenue that they receive for the tolls and the various ways that they receive it. Are there any questions on that section? Would like to...
I find this a very interesting slide. It's too late, but it would raise a question in my mind, why private-public partnership if the private sector's only bringing $272 million to the table?
They return to you 10 times.
Because you could get the other...
That's what you're saying.
It's a sweetheart deal.
Well, I think, I think it says a lot about what the philosophy needs to be as we look as a Commonwealth on major transportation projects. And I think the Commonwealth is probably taking a lesson from this as they looked at the 460 project. And that's not throwing stones at anybody. But when you look at a deal that the private sector's only bringing in $272 million in a $1.5 billion project, it makes you wonder if there was another way to skin this cat.
That's right.
The next section that we're gonna be talking about will be told before Susan Wilson comes up to speak with you on that issue. Would like to remind you that outside, we've heard a number of comments about how this affects the neighborhoods and pictorial. The map that we have is literally eight feet long. And to have it in a format that you can view and that you can actually see some detail. And I would urge you, when this part of the session is over, to visit that map. Staff will be out there to assist you with that. But we will be trying to get those segments online so people can see that pictorial. But we have tried it every way from Sunday to put it on a slide, and it didn't fit. And we felt like the best way was to give you that large graphic representation that you have out there right now. But that, Susan?
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I was, I'm starting my presentation to talk about tolls. Gonna discuss the amount of tolls, the peak, the off-peak, the auto, the truck cost, the two different payment options being offered for travel on the MLK and the tunnels, and the violations for not paying the toll cost. The toll rates for the downtown and midtown tunnels are broken into peak and off-peak for auto and truck travel. As you can see, the auto travel, the auto cost for peak times is $1.84 and off-peak is $1.59. The peak times are gonna be from Monday through Friday, 5:30 to 9:00 a.m., and 2:30 to 7:00 p.m. The cost to travel the MLK extension is gonna be 50 cents when it's combined with toll or tunnel travel, and then it's gonna be a dollar if not combined with tunnel travel. So for an example on the MLK extension, if you were to get off of 264 onto the new MLK extension and travel that through Penner's Point and take, for example, the West Norfolk Road exit, that would cost you a dollar because you would be traveling through the entirety of the MLK. But if you were to get off of 264 onto MLK and then take the High Street exit, it would only, you would not pay a toll at all. If you were on London Boulevard, for example, and, no, if you were on High Street and then took MLK to 264, then it would not cost you either. But if you took that to 264 and then traveled through the downtown tunnel, you would pay the, for example, the peak cost. If you were traveling during peak times, you would pay the $1.84. There's two different payment options for paying, travel through the tunnels and through, on MLK. The easiest and cheapest is the EZ Pass. It's just a transponder that you attach to your windshield in your vehicle once you have purchased it and registered it online. And then once you pass through the, or under a toll gantry, that transponder will note your travel, and you will be charged accordingly. A service center is gonna be open at 700 Port Center Parkway here in Portsmouth, and it'll employ 40 to 50 people. And at that service center, you will be able to buy a transponder or you can purchase one online. You must prepay $35 in tolls to open the EZ Pass account and receive a transponder. And if you purchased a transponder, I believe it was after December of 2012, there's now a 50-cent monthly account maintenance fee.
So every month, everybody have $1.50.
Yes.
You have 100, you have 95,000 people here, let's say. And that's not for the whole region. Chesapeake and everybody else. Can we charge them more in the personal property tax? When they rent the place down here? Just a question.
Good to think about.
The cost of the transponder is the $35 that you pay in prepaid tolls onto your account. And so you will always need to maintain a $35 balance on the transponder. If it dips, if it dips below that, then it'll automatically regenerate 35... I'm sorry? When it depletes to $10, it'll automatically increase to $35 again.
Can you use that between vehicles? Or is that transponder just good for one vehicle?
Oh, you can.
You can. You need to register your multiple vehicles. When you read the question and answer facts about the EZ Pass service, it does not recommend leaving it on your dash. It recommends attaching it to your windshield. So you would wanna have, you would wanna be able to attach it to windshields of multiple vehicles, but you would need to register each vehicle on your account.
Is it usable throughout the Commonwealth?
It is usable on roads that offer the EZ Pass. So the Chesapeake Expressway, you can use it on that.
Very, New York, Maryland, where you're gonna write that.
The second payment option for paying the toll is pay by plate. With this, you just travel through the tunnel or on MLK, and you will be charged what is shown here to be, whether it's the peak or off-peak rate for auto or truck, plus two times the off-peak rate for whatever mode you're traveling. So the, so the example that we're showing here is if I traveled through, let's say, the downtown tunnel, for example, during peak times, and I did not have EZ Pass system, I would pay the $1.84, which is the peak rate for auto travel, plus two times the off-peak rate. So that trip to travel through the tunnel one time will cost me $5.02 rather than the $1.84 if I had had an EZ Pass.
So is that what, if visitors to this area can expect to pay, they're gonna have EZ Pass? Every time they come through the tunnel?
It's our understanding, yes. Unless, unless, like Mr. Meek said, you would, you were traveling from a state that you already had an EZ Pass system in your car.
Unless we win the lawsuit.
Yes. Of course, there are penalties for not paying. The first offense, if the matter proceeds to court, the first offense would be $50. Second offense within one year is $100, so on. It can go up to $500 if there are four offenses within three years. And the additional penalty for not paying, if you have two or more unpaid tolls, that can result in a non-renewal of vehicle registration or license plate from the DMV because the DMV will get notified.
Do you need to stand up and stretch or anything? Or you wanna keep rolling?
Keep going.
All right, let's go.
Now the fun stuff. MLK design areas. Just to orient you, I flipped this map upside down so it would be in line with the renderings that I'm gonna show you on subsequent slides. The first area I'm gonna show you is shown here as Area 1. It's, the Midtown Tunnel is to the south. And to, will it be on the bottom of the slide? Midtown Tunnel's to the bottom of the slide, which is north. 264 is to the south, which is up. I'm sorry for confusing you. I'm hoping that you'll figure out where we are. This blue building right here is the Public Utilities, Calvary Baptist Church. So we've got three focus areas. Area 1, which we call the London Boulevard Gateway. Area 2, which is gonna be the High Street Bridge. And then Area 3, which is the Turnpike Road. I don't know what I do there. Sorry. Thank you. No. Yeah, the same button I had been pushing, the right button. It might be that thing at the bottom. Is that it? That's it? Okay. My apologies. This is the London Boulevard Bridge Gateway feature. These renderings that we are showing you are adopted as part of the technical requirements that's a part of the contract between VDOT and ERC. So this area right here shows you as if you were traveling south on MLK. The bridge that is shown on there is the existing bridge over London Boulevard. They're proposing putting two gateway-style monuments, one on either side of this interchange. The off-ramp to London Boulevard is just out of the picture. So you have just passed, heading south a little bit, the exit for London Boulevard off of the existing MLK. Right here, the columns are, these are rendering of the columns. They're showing a city seal being located on there, and these are the columns that are gonna be on either side. There's the existing cell tower right here. Here's the sound wall that separates existing MLK from Shea Terrace. So continuing in our pink vehicle heading south, this is the overpass over High Street. So north is to the bottom, south to I-264 is to the top. This is High Street right here. And even though you see a road under there, you actually wouldn't be able to see it because this would be a bridge over High Street. Bridge over High Street. And so in this picture, you can see this is the on-ramp to head to 264. So you could get on, you could turn from either way of High Street and head south onto the MLK extension and reach 264. Or if you were heading north on MLK, you could get off and get off at the High Street interchange. Those are the only two ramps that'll be at this intersection right here.
And if I'm coming from Cavalier Manor on 264 and I take MLK and get off on High Street, there's no toll?
There's no toll.
But I won't be going to the BP gas station, it looks like.
You will not be hitting the BP anymore. So this picture right here shows if you are on High Street, looking west, so looking to the midtown area or looking towards Churchland, and you had downtown to your back. This is what the technical requirements propose the design of the High Street Bridge to look like. You've got ornamental trees. You've got pedestrian scale lighting, decorative lighting on the bridge over High Street. There's wide pedestrian walkways. And then right here, this would be the off-ramp from MLK. So this way is south, and this way is north. Please let me know if I'm confusing you. This rendering shows if you are on High Street under the bridge of MLK. This is what it's proposed for the underside of the bridge to look like. So if you are walking along High Street, heading, let's say, from downtown to midtown, and you are under the bridge, you just passed over the MLK overpass, this is what the underside of the bridge is proposed to look like. There's pedestrians shown in this rendering because there's pedestrian scale lighting proposed. There's pedestrian pathways proposed. There's a faux brick texture, a nice design that is shown as part of this rendering. And our third area heading south on MLK to Two Sixty-four, um, is the area over Turnpike Road. Just to orient you a little bit, this is the existing Bethel Temple Church, um, County Street. This is right where Turnpike meets County, but because of the MLK project, County will no longer continue in this direction. It'll actually, as what James talked about earlier, be connected around this way via Service Road. So, Bethel Temple Church will still be able to, um, the parishioners there will be, still be able to travel on County Street, and they would be able to loop around and go into the, their existing parking lot right here.
Does it obstruct the aesthetics of the church where it is, as far as accessibility, aesthetics, and, and other things?
It, it's not supposed to. I think that the, um, maybe that one of their access points are, is impacted, but I believe that they are still, will be able to have access, because even though this road is shown to be skinnier, it's still a full-functioning, full-access, um, open street, public street.
But to answer your question, um, this roadway is about eighteen feet from the surface of the earth. It's about seventeen or eighteen feet. It's about the same elevation if you were going across the London Boulevard existing bridge. So, that's how high that structure is gonna be. And so, yeah, definitely, there'll be, uh, a different landscape here, uh, where there's none now that will be our structure. And this is all on Bridge Pilens at this point, too. Remember, James told you that once it crosses High, uh, High Street, it will be, uh, filled in, and then it goes to Bridge Pilens, uh, where it connects into Two Sixty-four.
The businesses are being affected, uh, can our EDA help them relocate enforcement so we don't lose the business?
Uh, we can, yes. Yes, sir.
Because, I don't know exactly, but it's probably gonna be about eight or ten businesses that are gonna be affected, just in this one little...
Doesn't ERC and VDOT have to pay for that?
It's gonna impact it.
We can be helpful, but we don't have to write any checks.
I would think, I would think some of those conversations should have already been taken place.
Yeah.
Yes, it should have.
They have.
Okay.
So, this is the Turnpike Road overpass. Uh, this, this rendering shows two ponds that are proposed on either side of Turnpike Road as part of this project. Um, this, this area shown right here in gray is proposed to be a pedestrian plaza. There's gonna be a bus pullout right here along Turnpike Road. There's gonna be pedestrian crossing, pedestrian crosswalk, crosswalks, pedestrian plaza areas, um, ornamental trees. Where, the city's hope on this was, the, these ponds are required as part of the project because of the required drainage. And so, our thought on it was, they should be some sort of, um, I guess, draw ornamental features and not just BMPs of stagnant water or dry ponds. And so, this rendering is attempt, um, is part of the technical requirements to, to show what, what this area could look like.
Are they gonna be, uh, are those ponds gonna be aerated? Uh, the reason I ask that, the, uh, current ones on, uh, One Sixty-four aren't, and in the summer, they, uh, almost turn totally green.
Uh, this is a big concern of ours, um, just for that reason. Uh, in order for it to be a wet pond, uh, think about the pond, the BMP at Churchland, it's gotta have a certain depth.
That's right.
And then, it's gotta have the aeration system. This hasn't been finalized. There's even talk about enclosing the quote-unquote "pond" with a chain-length fence. Uh, that's not what I think you want. It's certainly not what we would recommend that we have as a finished product. It needs to be something that is aesthetically pre- uh, pleasing.
That's right.
There's even some, uh, discussion about, instead of having a sloping side, having a concrete wall, like a pool. So, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done on this. Uh, in order to make it work, so it doesn't have stagnated water, it has to functionally easily, Bill.
Have we got the elevation of what the bridge over Turnpike looks like?
It's, uh, it's proposed to be seventeen feet.
Yeah, but do you have a picture like you have High Street and London?
No.
Okay. Is that because it's not available?
The next two slides kinda did.
I think the answer to that question, Mr. Mayor, is correct. It's not available to us, otherwise we'd have it.
We don't have.
And to answer your...
It's not there.
And to answer your question, all wet ponds in the project area will be area.
Yeah, it's on the next page.
Yeah, page thirty-seven.
Very good.
We're still debating the actual design and configuration of these ponds, and so, it's a work in progress.
This slide shows, um, what it would look like if you were pedestrians in this area that I showed on the previous slide. Um, like I said, we, our, our vision with the Turnpike Road, Road area was it to be a pedestrian-oriented plaza. Pedestrians should be able to feel comfortable around there. And so, this rendering shows ornamental trees, pedestrian-scale lighting, benches. It shows a forty-two-inch height ornamental aluminum fence in what is being called out as Pond Twenty-five, which on the previous page is the pond at the top of the page. So, that would be the pond on the south side of Turnpike Road. And this rendering was, is also included in the technical requirements, and it shows, um, what the pond could look like. It shows aeration, ornamental trees, uh, ornamental fencing, um, and service access. This shows the aesthetic treatments that also are included in the technical requirements. Uh, these aesthetic treatments are to be included in this Turnpike Road area. So, there, there's ornamental fencing, there's the decorative lighting, the pedestrian-scale lighting, benches, draft receptacles, et cetera. And as you travel along Two Sixty-four, sometimes you notice it, sometimes you don't, but there is an existing pedestrian bridge that crosses Two Sixty-four. It crosses from Manio Street and Douglas Park on the south side of Two Sixty-four, and it connects to Choate Street on the north side and other neighborhoods north of I-264. Because of the extent of the project and the location of what's gonna be the exit for both Frederick Boulevard and MLK, this bridge is gonna have to come down, and it will be replaced. So, as part of the agreement, when this bridge is removed, they will be providing a detour, but, um, the det- this bridge can be out of commission for up to, I believe it is nine months. And so, a detour must be provided for the, for that length of time. But, and I'm, I apologize on the visual. This is the only visual I've received so far that shows what the replacement bridge will look like. So, it's in black and white.
But it's gonna change locations?
Nope. It will actually be in the exact location that it is currently. The ramps that are there currently will be the ramps that are used when this bridge gets replaced. So, it's actually, it's just that bridge part that is having to come out. Now, we'll turn it over to Toya Wilson, who will discuss economic development.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'll be going over some of the benefits of this project from an economic development perspective, and also some of the, um, the impacts on the existing businesses. First, we do have a list of all the businesses that will be affected, um, by this project. We have not started that process yet of visiting those businesses, because we are under the understanding that VDOT has started that process with them already, but we are available to assist those commercial property owners in any way that we can. Over to the procurement opportunities, which are the benefits for this, um, project. Um, we're under the understanding that Elizabeth River Crossing does have goals for this project for disabled, disadvantaged business enterprises, and for SWAM, small women-owned and minority-owned businesses, fifteen and twenty-five percent respectively.
Mr. Cal, but not, but, but, back to Mr. Meek's point, um, I think it's good that VDOT is communicating with them, but, but if we want to keep them in enforcement, he's correct, we, we, we gotta be in that, in that conversation, because the conversation they, they might have with them may not necessarily, uh, include that.
It won't.
All right, so, we need to get in, get it out, get in that conversation, I think, uh, now, sooner rather than later.
Okay, yes, sir.
Just before some of them decide to, to take what VDOT offers and, and go, you know, across, across our boundaries.
So, we have not been in that conversation?
No. I would have to defer to the Director of the Department for that, because I have not been in that conversation. He's out of town right now on business, so I'm not sure about that.
That'd be something we'd, I'd be interested in, in a follow-up on, at our next meeting.
Well, we will, but we just got the list, uh, within the last three weeks of the properties that will be taken. And that was one of the early things. We started working on this presentation, eh, probably the first week in December, and that was on our list of things that we wanted to get, was a list of the properties, both residential and commercial. And Janie didn't get that until, I want to speak, maybe three weeks ago. So, absolutely, you guys are on the mark, and we'll, we'll get hot on that.
Thank you.
Even retaining the residents, you know, maybe we need to find them a place to stay, and business is a different location inside the city, so we don't...
Might have to relocate.
My conversation that I've had with businesses thus far is that, um, they are working with VDOT on some relocation options, and we are always available for site-selection processes to any business in the city, so we are working on that as they come available to us. To other implications for economic impact is the jobs. We've been notified that five hundred jobs will be, um, a direct product of this project, and a thousand jobs will be indirect products of this project. Um, currently, with my last correspondence with ERC, the three hundred and eighteen jobs have been produced from this project. Um, also, another economic impact is that ERC is based here in the city, and there's been a three-point-six-million-dollar investment, um, in their building that's located at the One Fifty-two Tunnel Facility Drive. That's a seventeen-thousand-square-foot facility. Are there any other questions on economic impact?
Do they have to have a business license? I don't have a design. They're in the city.
I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure.
I would assume the answer is yes, but I'll check.
All right. And is it taxable? The building?
We'll check.
I think this is all... I was just wondering, I think it's a good opportunity. We're talking about economic development, and with the Tyawata Community College, whatever skills and things maybe you needed, it's a good time to tie in with that program, and I think we gave it to benefit, profit a lot by doing that.
Yes, ma'am.
The college is right here, and we have a workforce that we could pull directly from that.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Okay. If there are no other questions, I'll turn it back over to James Wright for transportation.
Please.
Just gonna go over some more significant impact from the project, as it relates to, uh, traffic and some other impacts that we'll see in the city. As mentioned before, there'd be the permanent closure of the Des Moines Avenue and South Street exits. Anybody that's traveled through the tunnel, uh, in the morning or during rush hour knows that that's one of the exits that most people, actually, it's the last chance for them to get off and avoid some of that traffic. Um, additionally, Brenner's Park, Brenner's Place, Swanson Homes, that's their main access to get onto, uh, Two Sixty-four. There'd be a raised interstate, um, through the Midtown areas. We've already discussed, it's gonna be over seventeen feet tall. Um, it's gonna, it's gonna cut off King Street and County Streets, um, even though they will be connected by a service road, but, um, just imagine going down Virginia Avenue and seeing the brick structure of London Boulevard. Now, flip that, put that on Harbor Drive, come down High Street, and you'll see something of that magnitude as you're driving through the Midtown.
Queen Street's also gonna be impacted, even though it's already impacted with the, uh, MLK piece. You got a service road that comes around, that whole piece is gonna be impacted.
Which street?
That little short street going toward the utility building.
Queen Street or Remains Through, uh, Through Street? Tag, you'll still actually be able to go through a Queen? I think you're thinking of Liverpool, which is the one from that one.
Liverpool, okay.
Is Sugar Hill gonna be impacted on?
Not supposed to now. Um, as mentioned before, Trexler Street will be relocated. This is in a historical neighborhood, um, and involves relocation of, uh, families, uh, utilities, um, both private and public. Um, there will be frequent tunnel closures during construction. Um, just to give you an idea of some of the impacts, um, there's gonna be extra coordination that's gonna need to take place at the city level, um, amongst all departments that are involved in traffic, uh, be it police engineering, traffic engineering, to make sure the detours are in place that, that makes sense. While this project's going on, the Turnpike Road project will start, so you'll have two major projects going on in the city in the same corridor at the same time. If you're looking at the specific downtown area, you're talking about Ntelos concerts, you're talking about city events, um, you're gonna have to have a lot of coordination with detours, people taking alternate routes, um, and other things of that nature.
And isn't this about the same time the Kroger ought to be under construction, too?
Yes, ma'am, and, and the, the Turnpike Road project has actually been coordinating their work activities with the Kroger folks, so that they can accommodate their entrances and some other things as far as that Turnpike Road frontage.
Um, James, the closure of the Frederick Boulevard ramps, which ramps are those?
It is the off-ramp, uh, Two Sixty-four nearest to, uh, Bayside Harley-Davidson. It's the one where you get off and you, and you have the option to loop back around headed towards, uh, Turnpike Road, that ramp right there.
Yeah.
That'll be closed for approximately one year, uh, while they...
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
I didn't, didn't aware of that one.
They keep straight and go to the other church.
Hey, you gotta look out for those.
While they work on the project. And as mentioned before, um, there'll be some service interruptions for, uh, waterline tie-ins and, uh, relocations of services, um, also in this, the multiple state-owned store-mort facilities. At last count that I got from them, I think there are eight store-mort facilities proposed, um, three wet ponds, uh, five dry facilities. Okay, um, impact to local, on local traffic during destruct, during construction, um, overweight, over-length vehicles, um, are, are permitted through the engineer, through the Traffic Engineering Department and also through DMV. So, um, those, those types of trucks will have to be permitted, and they're given specific routes in the permit. So, they shouldn't be anywhere that they're not supposed to be if they're going through the project. Um, and there should be no, um, interruptions for material deliveries and stockpiling. Um, all of those areas should be laid out either at the port or within the project limits, and, um, there'll be taken service routes within the project limits to get to those areas. and they'll be taking service roads within the project limits to get to those areas. Upon completion, will these activities reduce traffic and congestion at the midtown and downtown tunnels? My personal opinion, I would say no. Just because as discussed before, they're not doing any widening on Hampton Boulevard. The Red Gate signal controls the action going through there. Even with re-timing, you're only going to get limited level of service without any expansion of Hampton Boulevard. And just to touch on individual street impacts, seeing as how there'll be so much activity going on with the city with these projects, specifically this one, the Turnpike Road project, we'll have to take extra care to monitor our existing city streets to see if there were any residual impacts from traffic to make sure that at the end of the project we can basically go back and say this road was in this condition prior to, the project came through, now it's in this condition, we need to take some measures to correct it.
The deliveries of the materials that job, it's going to, it's going to impact our roads. I mean, you're talking about it's going to be hundreds of thousands of yards of sand and stone, concrete and, you know, the trucks, most of them work about a ton or the load, so they're going to be going through the quickest route. Are we going to have a designated route for those trucks?
Yes, most of construction traffic should come actually through that corridor and they'll have service roads within that corridor. So I anticipate that they'll come most likely through that 164 corridor over and into whatever project area they need to, through that area to minimize the impacts on city streets. Not saying that they all will, but that's why we need to be cognizant and mindful of where some of these trucks that don't necessarily follow the route so that we can make sure that we can address those issues later. This is a map that they provided, basically a snapshot of the project area. It shows some of the existing truck routes within that area. Our existing truck routes are basically named US and State Roads, US 58, 17, 337, 239. So those are the main roads that they would be focusing on when they detour traffic. As I mentioned before, staff is coordinating plans as far as movement of both construction vehicles and other truck, types of truck traffic to ensure that these vehicles stay on the streets that they're supposed to stay on. And with that, I'll turn it over to Susan Wilson to talk about HRT.
As part of the agreement between VDOT and ERC, ERC will be providing HRT $2 million a year for transit improvements that will benefit the City of Portsmouth. Shown up here is the proposed improvements that HRT is looking into. These have not been finalized yet.
Is it $2 million a year for 58 years or for a year or two?
It's not for 58 years, 58 years. So $2 million in transit improvements is a great benefit to the City of Portsmouth. Route 44 and Route 45 travel between Norfolk and Portsmouth. Route 44 currently ends at 7:00 PM and does not have any Sunday service. With the proposed changes that HRT is looking into, they would extend service Monday through Saturday until 10:00 PM as well as provide Sunday service. Route 45 is the only route within the City of Portsmouth that currently operates after 7:00 PM. This route would receive 15-minute service during peak times, which they're anticipating to be 7:00 to 9:00 AM and 4:00 to 7:00 PM. Route 47 is pretty much within the City of Portsmouth. It does extend out to College Drive in Suffolk. But this route too stops at 7:00 PM and as part of the proposed improvements, they would provide 15-minute service during the peak times, extend service Monday through Saturday until 10:00 PM and then provide Sunday service. The Elizabeth River Ferry would also receive enhancements as part of their proposal. The service would begin at 6:00 AM rather than the current 7:00 AM time. And again, City of Portsmouth is receiving $2 million in improvements to HRT service. Transit riders would have the option of taking either the ferry or any of the buses that run between Norfolk and Portsmouth and just pay the current fare for transit and not have to pay the cost of the tolls.
This is the best slide you've had.
Ma'am?
I mean, this is really actually good news.
It's, I think it's great.
We're still trying to determine that with HRT, that's their talk.
Parking rides?
This is all their talk. We spent a hundred and time with HRT, just.
Yeah, and again.
How much we can get out of that $2 million and the increase to frequently going through the tunnel.
What about parking ride, would that bring it back?
I don't know.
You know.
We've had internal discussions with the city staff. We anticipate park and ride or the park and sale facilities to be used a lot more heavily than they are now. We anticipate transit ridership going through the roof, especially the ferry service.
One of the things too, I've noticed that many of those students are using the bicycles and putting them on the caddy sections on the buses and they are using that along with the transit.
Yes.
I know many of the students that are going to the colleges are using the bicycle caddies.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Janie Culpepper to discuss parcel acquisition.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. We're going to touch briefly this evening on the parcel acquisition within the city. First off, we're going to talk about the non-taxable parcels. There are five city-owned parcels that are wanting to be acquired, two PRHA-owned parcels, seven church-owned parcels. The taxable properties or assessed properties are 27 commercial parcels that are valued at $4,518,960, 26 residential parcels valued at $2,144,440. The impact on our tax revenue is as follows. There are 43 total takes valued at $3,748,670, 10 partial takes, $175,750, 5 easements which have a nominal impact. Total value, $3,009,24,420. The lost revenue annually, based on $1.27 per hundred, is $49,840.13. The next thing that we're going to look at are the five city-owned parcels which they are taking. Yes, sir. Parcel five is a portion of the land at the city's operations center on Frederick Boulevard. It consists of 12,299 square feet of land. Our assessment is 3, I mean, excuse me, 234 per square foot or $28,780. It is a portion of the land on the southeast corner of the operations center. This purchase or take will include a small easement and the removal and replacement of fencing in the affected area.
The five pieces that were, they're buying from us, do we have a value of that?
Total value, yes, sir, we do. Would you like me to give it to you now or until we go through each one?
Okay.
Parcel seven is a portion of land formerly known as Randolph Street Extension. This parcel consists of 2.4 acres or 104,544 square feet. This is a right-of-way parcel that has no assessment record. Similarly situated parcels are assessed from $2 to $3.50 per square foot. We estimated the value to be at about $300,000. No improvements are, will be affected at all in this take. And that is right here. Parcel 10, which is right here, is a portion of land located along the northwest boundary of Mount Olive Cemetery at Columbus Avenue. The property consists of 6,678 square feet. Our assessment is approximately $1.30 per square foot or 8,680 square feet. No improvements are affected by this purchase. Parcel 65 is a portion of the property known as 434 MacArthur Avenue. It consists of 229 square feet of land. Our assessment is $4.91 per square foot or $1,0124. No improvements are included in this purchase. Parcel 66, which is also up there, is the total take of the parcel known as 430 MacArthur Avenue. The parcel consists of 6,495 square feet of land. Our assessment is 426 per square foot or $27,650. No improvements are affected by this take. When I refer to take, I'm referring to an offer that is being made by VDOT. Our total assessed value for these parcels is $366,234.
Give you some more info. This is the utilities operations center here, down right back to your shirt, right there, right. So this is as you're approaching the High Street Bridge here.
Okay.
Then again, this is down off of 264. Make sure you're coming on your, your all right.
Yes, it is.
Yes, sir.
I see two components. One, we're going to be losing about $50,000 a year forever with the impact.
$18.
You know, so that's the dollar value there. Then the other dollar value, I see we're losing, all of those cars that come out of Martin Luther King that normally would take High Street or London would stop by the Walgreen or the CBX or Walmart. Now they have an opportunity to swing right through our city without getting off anywhere. And that's the loss of revenues too. I just want to make sure everybody pays attention to that because that's a lot of traffic that goes through there that normally, you know, if you're, let's say you live in Suffolk or Chesapeake and you cut through there, now you can stay on interstate the whole way. That's going to be a loss of revenue.
That and the sales tax, many businesses that are okay, that don't stay in the city.
To that point, have we, do we have an estimate on what that lost revenue in sales tax and other permits fees would be?
We don't. Again, all this stuff is fresh.
Looking at your practice, wasn't it making money? Because you'll miss it. You will miss it.
Any other questions for me?
Do we have, I'm sorry, I think you just told me this, but when we talk about the business properties?
Yes.
That would be acquired by ERC in this?
Mm-hmm.
I mentioned the BP station there at High and MLK. Are there other major businesses of that size that are affected?
They provided a list for us. I did not bring the list along with me, but there is a list and we did provide this to Economic Development. Mr. Small and I had a conversation regarding the businesses and the relocation of them and those that would just be adversely affected. And the list was provided for him.
It'd probably be a good idea for us to get that list, not that we necessarily can do anything, but it might keep us from being surprised in the grocery store.
I'd be glad to. And I'll also provide the residential parcels if you would like them also.
Yes.
It can hurt.
It would be helpful.
Because here's a couple of clues right there.
And you may be interested to know, there have been 11 residential parcels that have been purchased and have closed.
We're at the last slide before we come to any major questions and answers, and that's the next steps. We've talked and told you where we are, where we think we are, how things are moving along. There are a number of next steps. Of course, the transfer of the five city properties will be required by council action to transfer them from the City of Portsmouth to VDOT. They would be the ownership of record for those properties. As we indicated, we're looking at a number of ways for citizen participation. It would be links that would show progress on our website, links to other websites that could be clicked on to provide information. And then working with broadcasting this briefing to the city at whole through Channel 48. We feel like this is probably the first of maybe a few or several, or how many briefings that council will be needing. But those briefings need to be forwarded to the individuals that cannot make it to the meetings and we feel like that's important, that we would be continuing with that. Staff has been meeting with a number of stakeholders. There are real estate groups, there are first responders groups, there are utility, there is right-of-way. Again, there's probably eight different groups that are meeting and ERC has moved out and so has VDOT with the different citizen groups like Old Town Business Association because we feel like coordination is going to be very important. You've heard, we're going to have work at the downtown tunnel, we're going to have work at the midtown tunnel, we're going to have work at MLK, we're going to have work at Turnpike Road. We didn't mention that we're going to have work in the downtown area for the next two years as we replace all of the utility lines. We've mentioned all of the Intelos events, you know, Memorial Day Parade, the Mother's Day Arts Festival. There are a number of coordination events that have to occur and those are parts of, you know, our next steps that we need to be working on as a staff to make these transition as smooth as possible. With that, we would like to just open it up if there are any questions and answers. Again, I'd like to remind you of the material that is outside for you to look at and we will have staff there to assist if there's anything on that.
Brad, I would suggest that we include the merchants in the mid-city. I know Kroger was mentioned, but you know, we have.
Harley-Davidson's sitting right behind you.
Harley-Davidson, Chick-fil-A soon be there, obviously Walmart and a lot of bank, a lot of merchants that probably going to see a decrease in traffic.
We will be happy to do that. We're in the process of forming groups continuously as we go along, as they become identified. And like I said, we have been working very closely with the Kroger design team in the development of Turnpike as well as Frederick Boulevard corridor.
I think one thing that's going to be crucial, not only your faith-based organizations in the city, but we make sure the civic league, wherever you're making these changes, that at least the civic leagues, you have a presentation with them and with the faith-based communities. Maybe setting up an area meeting bishop would be good because sometimes we have a tendency not to come together and we can cover a lot.
We'll be happy to. We've used that before and we've actually expanded a group that we send notices to for a number of purposes to be the churches, religious institutions, the civic leagues. And we've added another group to that, which is the youth sports associations to try to, you know, connect with as many different people as possible.
Okay, good. I think the other thing we're going to have to really pay attention to, and I know and I know this is not necessarily just our job, it's ERC's job, VDOT's job, but, but these are our constituents too. We talked about, I'm not gonna divert to my suggestion on community meetings and how we sort of change the format. But what we do in the community, we need to make sure we do some of it in a day. Because the very people that aren't gonna see this on television or YouTube or wherever are those, likely those same elderly folks who are not coming out to a 7:00 PM meeting. So we need to be out there at 10 o'clock in the morning and 2 o'clock in the afternoon, particularly with some of the elderly who don't get out much, but might come to, you know, the Churchill Library or, you know, the Edmund Center or somewhere like that that's convenient and they feel safe coming to at 10 o'clock in the morning.
Yes, ma'am. We feel it's important for, for those individuals to be notified and to have a chance to, to view this. But we felt like you were the first in, in that journey of many steps, so.
Yeah, I feel, I think she's, similar to what you did years ago with, when you had to set up that Denweide Corner, that, that kind of setup for people that could come in different times of the day.
That's exactly what I mean.
What she's referring to, something like that.
Yes, sir.
The park and ride, we have a, you know, the way they're gonna have us, anything going towards Norfolk or even South Norfolk is gonna be a total. So the park and ride, I think that would be a big hit, especially some of your bigger communities. Yeah, for mid, mid-city areas, the midtown areas, the Kavler Manor area, the Churchill area, the Craddock area, and one for downtown. You know, I don't know where, we have land, I know we're very slim on land, but we might need to try to locate some spots. Even if we, as a city, make the park and ride and then detour HRT that are the spots so those people at least have an opportunity to get on the bus and get to work or get to class or.
Some satellites.
We've, we've done that. If, if you remember when the Jordan Bridge was open, we actually were able to create a partnership with the Williams Court 1 and 2 shopping centers to use their facilities as, as almost a park and ride for that grand opening day of there. So we'll be happy to look into those.
On the, on these 1,700 local jobs that were mentioned, I think it mentioned that 40% of those would be local minority, women-owned, disadvantaged business owners. Is that 40% applied to the region? Or is that 40% gonna be come from Portsmouth? The reason why I ask that, obviously we know that our unemployment rate here in Portsmouth is one of the highest
Yes, it is.
in the region. So how, how much, how much influence do we have over where those jobs are going to?
I would say little or none, but we'll check on that, see if we can get a response for you.
Okay.
One more question, since I see Commissioner sitting in the room. Please tell me these people are taxable with their office here? Is the ERC people in their nice, pretty new office here taxable?
Seventeen thousand square foot for some of these.
I just want a yes.
When we, when we do that process, but I'll look at it, it's a public
Frankie, can you come to the microphone for a week?
I'm trying to get your tape.
Good evening. We're in the process of working through that process in our office. I'm Frankie Edmiston, Commissioner of Revenue. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, I came just to see the presentation. But I can tell you, it's an ongoing legal review of the public-private partnership of 1995. If you look at that particular piece, there is a tax exemption component that if the individual who has a business uses that exemption, then it remains to be seen. In Virginia, taxation is the rule, exemption is the exception. And if in fact they have an exemption, it's in the state code, then they're gonna be able to receive that exemption. Well, and I'm gonna tell you, regardless of what it is, we're gonna have to follow the code. And as I stand before you today, it is being reviewed. But I can also tell you, if, in addition to the benefit of doing the project, what would be the benefit of being in a public-private partnership if you don't get a tax exemption? And you're a businesswoman and you know that business is clever. Ironically, there was a, a bill in 1994, companion bill, that preceded the 1995. And it had such things as local referendums and other things. And they were taken out in 1995 to create the current Public-Private Partnership Act. And I'm quite sure, just so you know, no other locality in the Commonwealth of Virginia has dealt with this Public-Private Partnership Act since the exception of it. And Portsmouth has had to deal with it twice on major projects, this being one of them within the last year. So we've been working with the city attorney's office and our own attorneys in our office to determine just what that might be. But our first clear read of the Public-Private Partnership Act suggests to me that if they have a tax exemption status, then they would use that tax exempt status. And if that were the case, then under current law, they may not have to pay a tax. Here again, we will do the due diligence and do the research to make sure that they will, you know, follow Virginia code. But we're the enforcer, not the policymaker. And I wish I had, you know, a different answer. But I can promise you, we'll continue to do our job and stay on top of every legal aspect and every public policy aspect to make sure that if they have a requirement, that they will live up to their corporate standards. I'm not sure if that answers your question, but
I won't shoot the messenger, but thank you.
Right, I mean, that's the message. I don't know why there would be a benefit to be in a public-private partnership other than doing the deal, doing the project, if in fact you didn't get that, that tax exempt status is a component of that language. So.
So do they pay taxes on the profits?
I'm sorry?
I'm saying, because they're tax exempt, do they pay on the profits? Would you do that?
Well, the short answer to your question is tax exempt means tax exempt. And if they, if they have that tax exempt status, it's gonna be hard to, to tax them on their profits. Because we don't have, to this point today, we don't have a corporate income tax structure to charge the tax. And so it depends. I mean, you know, there's a lot of gray area that we're uncharted waters here. And I can suggest to you that we have been involved with this for some time. And it, it is gonna be interesting to see how it plays out. But I'm convinced that we've got some of the best and brightest professionals working on this. And with your help through other budgetary situations later on in the year, maybe we'll be able to attract some other folks to work on this. And that's why it's very important to have talented folks in our office to make sure that they understand matters such as this. It's important to work with the manager and the city attorney and others to make sure that we're on top of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Any other questions, Mr. Roy's staff? Mr. Roy, let me just thank you and your staff for this. I think this was a good briefing, especially for the citizens who are here. Please take advantage of the analysis outside and Mr. Bruce on his staff will be out there answering the questions. I know you didn't get a chance to answer, asking questions in this forum, but you will be out there and, and they have committed to stay as, as long as needed. Right, 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 Mr. Roy?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Any other questions? I guess we adjourned.
Thank you, sir.